All right, we're ready.
We'll call this session the DeKalb County Council Thursday, July 31st, 2025. An order, first order of business will have heard by Rick Collins.
All right, let's pray together. Our Father God, we stop in this moment to ask you to be a part of our meeting this evening. We ask that you would help us in this meeting to have open minds and open ears, that we listen well to our citizens as we go about this work of the citizens of DeKalb County. I pray that you would give us wisdom in our decision making as we move forward on some of this discussion, and we ask you that you would take us all, everyone in this room safely home this evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
You could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business, Susan?
Yes, I have the statement of investment policy. Prezjer Humberger had brought this to us last meeting with the changes. She had showed you the changes. I printed out the copy with the red, those are the changes. This is the long-term investment policy so that she's able to invest more than two but less than five, and she had to take it back to Board of Finance who approved that on the 25th last Friday. So now we have to bring it back to council for you guys to approve the policy for Dave to sign so that she can move forward with investing.
I second.
Dave, we have a motion by Bob Kraft. We have a second by Rick Collins. Any further discussion from the council? And then I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the long-term investment policy, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those, motion is carried. Next order of business will be, we'll be discussing the wheel tax presentation, and I want to put out just some basic ground rules here before we get started here. First of all, we're going to keep a civil tone here with this discussion tonight. There's going to be people that are going to be speaking in favor of, and there's going to be people speaking against, but we're all going to be civil and respectful to everybody during the presentations and during the course of the meeting here. Purpose of the meeting tonight is to gather information. There are no decisions made of any type. We're here to listen, and that's the whole purpose of this meeting. We're not going to be bouncing back questions back and forth. The council is here to gather information from the public and anybody else that wishes to speak here tonight. The format for speaking tonight will be, you'll have two minutes to speak, and I would strongly suggest you state your name and address and move right into your presentation. Don't use your two minutes talking about your credentials or your background because your total time is going to be two minutes, and we're going to hold it tight. So if we're hearing that, we are going to have, we'll be hearing from Councilman Van Wai, Councilman Ring, and Ben Parker. So I'm going to turn this part of the meeting over to Councilman Bill Van Wai.
Yeah, I just, I just found out I had to speak. But me, basically, I'm going to tell you, we got here because the state government has reduced some of our funds, and to get more funds, we have to put an excise tax and a wheel tax on. The excise tax is on the cars, and it's only on the cars. It's not on every will, it's just on the cars and what follows in that category. The exci, I mean, the wheel tax, excise, if I had it right, wheel tax goes on the bigger vehicles and everything, and that's, and we have to pass one, we have to pass the others. As explained to me, they're a married couple, and they can't get divorced. So anyway, they have to go on that. We are pushed in this position because we have significant funds shortage in our highway, highway funds, and we're trying to increase some of the money so we can repair some of the roads. And that's the only reason here, and we're trying to decide what our rates are. We want to hear what people rate and how it is, and we're trying to get some information out. So that's all I need to say.
And we've put together a slide presentation to give as much information as we possibly could to everyone. This slide presentation is available on the county's website, and I've also asked, because number, some of this information was taken from the video that LTAP, the Purdue Road School people, put together on the wheel tax. That will also be available on the county's website so that you can, you can see this information for yourself, and you can have a copy of what we're talking about tonight. The, one of the, one of the purposes, one of the things, one of the standards that counties are kind of held to, their, their roads are rated, and we need to get our, our roads above a five, so six, six and above. This is, this is currently where our roads are now, and I know that it's going to be kind of small for you guys back there, and again, that's why it's available to you on the website, but you can see that we've got a number of roads that are either rated as a two, three, or four, and five. Those are the ones that we need to get upgraded, and there are 704 miles of roads in DeKalb All right, the paved roads that are currently rated from zero to five, and one other thing I want to point out is, this does not include gravel roads. Gravel roads are not rated. There are roads that are rated number one, there's, there are no, no miles there, rated a two, there are 2.1 miles, rated a three, there are 13.06 miles, rated a four, 35.55 miles, and rated a five, 72.1 miles, for a total of 123 mi, 123.13 miles. Those are, those are the roads that we need to get addressed. And the maintenance that's needed on those roads by rating and mileage, the number two, and Ben, you're going to have to help me on that. What, what ended up being the zero? What, what was that road?
The zeros is a one. We don't have any roads rated a one as a.
Okay, so it should actually be as a, as a one. Okay. So there are $72,000 worth of, worth of work that needs to be done there. At rated number two, there are 2.1 miles, and there's $472,500 in construction that needs to be done there. Rated a three, and this, 3.27 of reconstruction, maintenance overlay of 9.8, for a total cost Rated as a four, there are 35.55 miles, and there's $6,43, $6,43,500 there in construction and maintenance costs to that road. Then there are three that are rated as a five, and it's either needing double microsurface, double chip seal, or chip seal, and there, that estimated cost is 1.2 million, for a total of $10,247,768 on 123.14 miles of road. We all know that you can't fix that right away. If you can't do it in a year's time, it's going to have to be spread out over a number of years. So it is breaking that 10 million down. If we needed to, if we tried to do it in five years, we'd need to generate an additional 2, 2,49,000 a year for those five years. 10 years, 1,24,000, and 15 years, 683,000. So it's a choice that will, the council, that the council and the commissioners will have to make. How fast do you want to do the, the upkeep? Ben, you have anything you want to add to that?
No, you did good.
I would, I would just want to add, Rick, that that's as of today, so you got to keep two things in mind. Those costs will go up over the years as you're trying to, and the new road, roads that currently aren't needing fixed will be needing fixed two or three or four years down the road.
And that brings another point, too, is that five years is a pretty good number to use for maintenance. After that, there's a lot of variations that can change in road conditions, changes yearly, but after five years, that number will probably increase a lot if we don't address the issue.
Can you explain a little bit about what the, the rating system is? I know I've had a few questions on that, just so people understand what getting to a six means.
We was required back, I don't remember how many years it's been now, three years ago, it must have been longer than that, 2016, I believe it was, NDOT come out and it required all counties to have a Pacer system, which was based out of Wisconsin, and that Pacer system is based on scoring your paved roads from a zero to a 10, zero being worst, to 10 being new construction. So in order when we did that, we had to submit that to LTAP for review with our road assets, our road asset management plan, is based off our road scoring, that also goes towards community crossings matching grants, so we get a letter back from LTAP that made us eligible for that matching grant. Well, this is a system that the state wanted to have in order for they could see it in their fiscal body down there, where the, the state's road network is actually at. Because prior to this, everybody had a network that was a little bit of everything. Some had nothing, some had some, some used this, some didn't. Well, now everyone in the state of Indiana uses this format, uses the Pacer system, and uploads that to LTAP, and then that also gets sent off to the state. So when these bills change, the legislators have our road data nationwide. I wish I'd brought that with you, because it was just put out the last meeting that has the average deficit in the state of Indiana for the roads. That's what created this, the start.
And this chart shows you the annual pavement maintenance costs, and this is just maintenance yearly on our roads. Asphalt with micro, microsurface, 128,000. Asphalt with chip and seal, 3,380,000. Concrete, nothing. Gravel and stone conversion, three miles per year, 420,000. Gravel and stone maintenance, 300,000. Sinage, 45,000. Marking and striping, 95,000. Calcium chloride dust control, 369,000. Highway drainage tax, 75,000. So those annual maintenance costs, $5.1 million off that, and that's.
What we should be spending.
What we should be spending.
Yes. Well, a lot of these numbers are accurate, is what we are spending. We are spending the 45,000 on signage, we are spending the 95,000 on striping, we are spending the 369, actually a little more than that, on the calcium. The drainage tax is correct, and the gravel stone is correct. The rest of that is the fluctuating part, where our deficit comes in as far as the maintenance on the asphalt, microsurface, chip seal, or the gravel stone conversions. As our annual maintenance budget goes down, this is what we are operating with now. So out of the current, current highway budget, we have 1.9 million appropriated, out of the ceded, lighted budget, which is given to us from the county commissioners each year of a million, our total maintenance funds right now, what we are operating off of is 2.9 million. So you can see the surplus shortfall of 2.2 billion where we're at, to where we should be to do the maintenance. Now, I want to specify, too, this is just strictly maintenance. This is no reconstruction, no rebuilding roads, other than the 420 on the gravel is a very minor rebuild. For instance, the, the rebuilds can be astronomical on cost from one way or another. County Road 56, over here, we just finished a federal aid project, 1.6 miles roadway was 5.2 million in construction cost. Now, we can go on a rural county road, it'll probably be 250, 300,000 for reconstruction cost, with more local funds and not federal aid, where we're not buying right away, things of that nature. So that is something I wanted to see and realize that this is just maintenance, this is not any reconstruction, and we have reconstruction we should be looking at and doing if money allows, if this goes through. But, you know, like we've always done, we'll work with what we have, I mean, in our budget, but we stretch the money as far as we can. As you can see, we're, we're up, been operating with 2.9, and we're already short to where we should be, and that's.
Yep. I was just going to say, the other thing I want to point out is, the commissioners currently, and for a number of years, have given part of their ceded funding, their lighted funds, that they have in that budget to the highway department in the form of a million dollars.
At least, yes.
With, with SB 1, that million, that lighted fund is going to go away. It's not going to exist anymore. So that money will have to come out of the general fund, which they did make a change this year, and the legislature that allows this give money out of the general fund to highways, which we could not do before.
Ben, I remember, and Rick, either one, the highway drainage tax for 75,000, can you explain that for the public? I was a little surprised we found out that we, we actually pay tax on drainage on some of our property, or?
We pay.
It's not tax, it's the drain assessment.
Assessment, yeah, your drain assessments. But the county actually pays on drains.
For the right of ways, yes.
Yeah, on our right of ways.
Plus, we maintain them.
Plus, we maintain them.
Yeah.
And that's, he pays for those that are in the highway department. I pay for all the others that are just in the name of the county or the commissioners.
Yeah, it's quite a bit of money a year.
And I think to Ben's credit, Ben, when we talked to you, had pointed out that over the years, our Pacer rating on our roads have gone up. They were, I think, right around a four in the past, and at this point, we're right around five or six. So an average, we have increased our averages, which kudos to the department.
We have, each year since 2016, we have gradually climbed, yes, with the monies we have. We started out in 2016 at 5.23, and we've, 2024, we was at 6.36, yes.
The other supplemental funding that's possible for the highway department is, of course, the community crossings grants, and that can be up to a million dollars, and federal highway grants. And as Ben just said, the County Road 56 project was partially funded by a federal highway grant. So, and part of the whole issue with the wheel tax is, in future years, the community crossings grants are going to be separated into two different parts, and the initial part, we would still be always eligible for as a county, but if you want to be eligible for the second level or the next grouping, the state is requiring that we have the wheel tax and excise tax. If we don't have it, then we're not qualified to get that additional funding. This is a list of the needed capital projects that we have in the county. I know that the one, County Road 60 from 35, or no, County Road 60 from I-69 to 427, the commissioners just talked about that one at their last meeting. But Ben would like to widen County Road 23 for six miles at 250,000 a mile, so that's 1.5 million. County Road 60 from 35 to St. Joe, the estimate in, in 2011 was 17 million, it's now 23.5 million. County Road 60 from I-69 to 427, 5 million. County Road 68, 20.5 miles, 3.28 million. 327 mil and overlay just four miles, 720,000. And County Road 427 mil and overlay, 5.75 miles, 1.35, 1, 1,035,000. So those are, those projects have probably been on the books for quite some time. I mean, the one, we know since 2011.
Right.
Anything, any comments about any of these, or?
I mean, these are projects that we're looking at, that some of those will qualify for federal aid. One of them up there, I see, will not, the Kangaroo 23, most likely, but the other ones potentially could, but we've got to have the match for it.
So that, that total list there is 35 million, 35,000. We didn't spend a lot of time on this, but wheel and excise tax can also cover the expenses for the bridges, and we have the 103 bridges, and average bridge life was going to be 50, 50 years, and there, a lot of them are heading up on that. If, if just 50, 51.4% of the bridge inventory will need replacement within the next 10 years, that's 53 bridges, or you can look at it as 60.75% of the bridges will need replacement within 15 years, and that's 63 bridges. And one of the issues with the bridges are, the bridge goes out, that's going to add miles to travel, not only for the, the, just the residents in the county if those bridges go out, but, but for the farmers. If a farmer has to go five, six, seven, eight miles out of his way to get to his field because a bridge is out, that's going to cost time and, him time and money.
Hey, Ben, will you speak to real quickly? Some people, some thought is that the bridges are only the bridges in the county, but it goes beyond that, correct?
Correct.
Not, I'm scar, sorry, on county roads, on county roads.
Correct.
We, as a county, are responsible for?
Yes, because the county collects the cum cap tax. So all bridges in DeKalb County belong to the county unless they are on a state road, or if they go over a state road, like the bridges that go over I-69, the state maintains those. The bridges in the cities and towns, the county maintains, plus the ones on the county roads, yes.
Thank you.
And a number, a number of years ago, and we just actually renewed this one, the bridge fund was short. We didn't have the money necessary to maintain the bridges, so we actually made a change and dedicated part of the cum cap tax that pays for our other capital expenses, dedicated it to the bridges. So, and that's going to, at some point in time in the future, whether it's five years from now or 10 years from now, who knows, your capital needs for the county are going to keep climbing, and if you're still taking money out of it for the bridges, you're not going to be able to cover some of your capital, capital needs.
And that's 42%.
42%?
42% of.
Of the cum cap?
And we're already there with the other capital needs for the county.
All right, this is, this is not the presentation that I was suggesting that you look at, that we're going to put on our website, but this is one that was done by LTAP back in May. It has, it has the information that we need. What is the low hut? And that is the local option highway user tax. It's, there are two parts to it. There is the excise tax, which is essentially your passenger vehicles, mopeds, motorcycles, and there is the wheel tax, which is more the commercial or larger equipment, larger vehicles. They are designated for local road and bridge funding, was passed, originally was passed by the legislature back in 1980, so it has existed for that long. DeKalb County has actually looked at this tax at least twice that I'm aware of, and defeated it, and, and chose not to go, go with this. Kind of, again, kind of backed into a corner now, because now if we want to have the additional funding we need and be qualified for those second level community crossings grants, we have to have the, the wheel tax. Has to be. This just goes through what I just explained. There is, there are two different, actually, two different taxes, and you cannot have one without the other. If you, if you pass one, you've got to pass the other, and if you, you eliminate one, you have to eliminate the other. They, they have to be together. These are, these are your vehicles that it would apply to. On the excise tax side, it's passenger cars, trucks less than 11,000 pounds, motorcycles, motor-driven cycles, which are mopeds, trailers less than 9,000 pounds, and the rates can go, if you don't have the asset management plan, and DeKalb County has an asset management plan, but if you don't have one, you can only have tax here in between $7.50, up to $25. We have the asset management plan, so we're allowed to go from 7.50 up to $50. And that, that's a rate that the council will have to decide at what, at what rate they want to set that. And again, it goes back to the, what kind of money and how fast do you need to generate it? It is, you can also do something based on a percentage of difference between classes. That one will also be looked at. On the wheel tax side, trucks over 11,000 pounds, trailers, semis, buses, recreational vehicles, and there, the, the rates go from $5 to $40 if you do not have the asset management plan, or up to $80 if you do have the asset management plan. And again, as Bill said early on, this is a per vehicle, even though it says wheel tax, it's per vehicle, not per wheel. And the effective dates. If we would want to have this tax in place for 2026, the council would have to pass it before September 1 of 2025. So we're essentially have one month to make that choice, if we want it to be effective, January 1, 2026. If it were to pass after September 1, it would not be effective until January 1, 2027.
Rick, and Bill, can you, we met with Jennifer from LTAP, and I think she said that that first year you don't get it because you're collecting it for that first year, you actually get it in '27. So if we passed it now, and you collected it all in '26, we wouldn't get it until '27. Is that right? That's what she said? It builds up for that year?
That was, that was on the crossroad. Wasn't that on the crossroad?
That's on the crossroad.
Or that's on the crossroads, money.
Wheel tax will start January 1.
We would get that right away.
See, they, they, the, state laws are passed, they want to build up how much money's available in '27 to us, and so they weren't going to distributor that first year because of several laws, and I might get into them if they pass for Indiana high, and railroads, so that they could, could.
That's the extra money that's available if we pass a wheel tax from crossroad. That builds up for an extra year.
And just as it, I mean, we deal with other things that are on the state fiscal year that confuse everybody, that community crossings goes from a calendar year to a state fiscal year in '27, I believe it was, so just, just to muddy the waters.
To the crossroad.
The other, the other thing, and probably should have said this earlier, the highway department is funded by money coming from the gas tax, what you pay on a gallon of gas when you fill up your vehicle at a, at a gas station. That money coming back to each county and city that has roads is not stagnant. It's, it's, it's going up, it's going down, and as vehicles are getting better gas mileage, as a requirement is out there for vehicles to get better gas mileage, you're going to get less and less, unless you. get less and less, unless you get more vehicles and buy more gas. But as your mileage goes down, your, your money coming back to the county is going to go down. Now, if, if the county passes the wheel tax, the, all of the incorporated cities and towns in the county will receive a portion of that fund, those funds that are generated. And it is, if your county is above fifty thousand, the, the allocation to the cities and towns is based on sixty percent on population, forty percent on relative road miles. If you're less than fifty, which DeKalb County is less than fifty, you're, the money going to the cities and towns is going to be twenty percent based on population and eighty percent based on mileage. So, every incorporated town in DeKalb County would receive money if we were to pass this. Auburn, because of its size and population, of course, is going to be the, get probably the most, then Garrett, all the way down to Little Altona is even going to get some Now, this is, this is what's on the, this is what's on the document that you can download from the county's website. The chosen rates are there for an example only. Those, those rates, in this particular case, this is the excise, so it can go anywhere from seven fifty up to fifty dollars. We put it in, just as an example, cars at fifty, motorcycles at, or trucks at, at fifty, motorcycles at twenty-five, motor, motorcycle, mopeds at ten dollars, trailers at twenty-five dollars, trailers less than three thousand pounds are exempt. There is nothing on, on those trailers. So, the ma, at, just at those rates, with the asset management plan, the maximum that could be generated would be two-point-six million dollars, but with those rates that we've chosen, it generates two-point-two million dollars per year. So, again, those numbers can be manipulated, and that will happen at the next council meeting where those are discussed. I do know that, because we're going to get into something on the, on the wheel tax side, but there is a provision, I don't think you can exempt anybody that's not in state law, but I know that there's a concern about historic vehicles. I mean, this is Auburn, I mean, we've, we've got historic vehicles. That, those rates can be set separately, but it have to qualify for historic plate, which there are some restrictions on those historic plates, as to, you can receive one if you meet certain criteria. This is the, the same thing on the wheel tax. Here, most of, we set buses at eighty, to, to farm semi-tractors at forty, farm semi-trailers at twenty-five, farm trailers at twenty-five, farm trucks at forty, recovery vehicles at eighty, recreational vehicles at eighty, semi-tractors, semi-tractors at eighty, semi-trailers at eighty, special machines, we don't have any of those, so we, it's in there at forty, trailers of less than nine thousand pounds at forty, and trucks over eleven thousand pounds at eighty. And then, I don't know how, we, we pulled these numbers, and it does show that we have four truck campers, and none of us understand that, but, so we think you, you place the truck, and what's the camper got to do with it? But I think it's a mistake. But again, we can adjust those numbers as, as we discuss. There is only one type of vehicle, other than government-owned vehicles or not-for-profit vehicles, that is our exempt, and that is in the state law. Funeral vehicles are exempt, so hearse are not going to get charged. And with that, with those numbers that we've put in there, the, go to one that I can read. It's almost as bad as that one up there, as small as that is. Just, oh, there's a, there's one that's bigger. Thank you. At the, at the max, at the rates that we set, Altona would get seven thousand dollars, Ashley would get thirty-three thousand, Auburn would get three-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand, Butler would get seventy-two, and Corona would get seven thousand, Garrett would get a hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, Hamilton would get twenty-four thousand, St. Joe would get eleven thousand, almost twelve, almost twelve thousand, Waterloo would get sixty-six thousand, the city subtotal would be seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, and the county's portion would be two million twenty-three thousand, for a total of two million seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, two ninety-six fifty, at those rates. And again, those rates will, will change, because those are just ones we put in here as an example. And this has changed a little bit. Those, those, those counties that are in gold are those counties that currently have the wheel tax. There are fifty-five counties. There are also sixteen, because this, back up a second here, this is the county doing this, and the county will share part of, part of the money that we get from our wheel tax with cities and towns. Cities and towns that are greater than five thousand in population also can put a wheel tax on their, their vehicles that are registered. And if they want to get the second level of community crossings, they have to also implement it. Now, if the county puts it on, they could put it on at the very minimum, though is not to, to, you know, double up on anybody, but they, they could set it at the very minimum and still get additional funding. The, you can see the, the northwest corner, none of those counties have it, but in all those cities, the, the majority of the cities that have it are up in that northwest corner. Allen County, Allen County has it, but so does Fort Wayne, and so does New Haven. You get down to Hamilton County, Noblesville, Fishers, and Carmel, don't, they do have it, but Hamilton County does not have it. And the one up in our area, closest one to us, is probably Wabash, and it's my understanding that Wabash passed this last Tuesday, this past Tuesday, their initial reading of this to join. And I have not, I haven't talked to anybody from Grant Township, so I don't know what Grant Township is doing. But with that, again, what we just went through is on the county's website, the LTAP video that they put together to explain what the wheel tax and excise tax is and what it's used for and how it's calculated, that'll be on the, on the county's website. And I think that, you know, we're, we're here to, to listen to what everybody's comments are, but don't, you know, there are a number of people watching us, I'm sure. There's, there's, our email addresses are on the county's website. Send us a message. My phone number's on the county website. Call me. I'd be more, more than happy to listen to you. But that's where we're at. David?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ben, for being here. Appreciate it.
Do you want, Rick did not touch on that, for the community crossings, for the formula funds that DeKalb County could receive. Would you like me to state those, those amounts?
That's fine.
Well, the, the community crossings, you know, that's, that changed in its latest House bill. Before, the money was really grown in that pot, that state, the last two years increased that match from a million to one-point-five million, which DeKalb County's always been successful with the community crossings grant. After this legislation, that grant has changed to a hundred-million cap that they can give out. Last year, I was told they awarded three-hundred-and-thirty-two million. This year, there's going to be a hundred-million cap moving forward, with some other monies appropriated, Marion County and some tracks and other things. So, what is left after that grant money that is still in the fund is what will be distributed out as formula funds, and that's what they are requiring us to have the gas, or the wheel tax for. The number that Jen provided back in the May meeting, these was estimated numbers, because that formula fund is unknown, who else is going to enroll wheel tax, what cities or towns are going to join. So, with the estimated numbers that they give, the best of their ability, year twenty-twenty-seven, DeKalb County could see one-point-six to two-point-one million dollars in formulated funds. And then going to fiscal year twenty-eight, we could see seven-hundred thousand to one-point-three million. Fiscal year twenty-nine, one million to one-point-five million. So, when that formulated funds comes to us, that is not project-driven funds, so that is funds that we can use on any road, anywhere in the county. So, with the community crossings, that is project-driven. When we apply for that, we have to submit an application, the justification, the reasoning, and sell it to NDOT in order to get the funds. With the formula funds, it will be our funds to operate within the county where we feel the need. That is one nice thing with the change, there's no ties to it.
Ben, just to clarify, Rick, as you say, the, the initial community crossings grant that we apply for competitively in the state, that total dollar amount's going down?
They're capping it at a hundred million to give out. We can still, and now you can only apply up to a million.
For the state.
Right.
But the, the extra that we get if we pass a wheel tax is going to be automatically distributed, and it's going to be between those numbers based upon how many people participate?
Correct. If we don't pass the wheel tax, we're not eligible for the formula funds. We'll still be eligible to apply for the community crossings grant match at one million, but it's also, you've got to remember, last year, this is what's kind of concerning, they awarded three-hundred-and-thirty-two million. So, it's going to make that grant match a lot more competitive. So, we may get it, we may not, we may get half of it, I don't know. I don't know what the future holds. All I can say is we, we try every year to get as much as we can. So, but that's all I have.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, guys.
Before we get into the, the public comments here, just like to reiterate a couple of things here. This wheel tax issue's come up several times over the last twenty, thirty years, and the council and the commissioners, it's always been voted down. And the reason is that the commissioners, the highway department, the council, everybody involved has been extremely prudent with the tax dollars here. And now, the state has come back and saying that if you want to get this second level of community crossing funding, you have to put it on. So, in essence, for being prudent, we're being penalized, and I'm sorry, you can look at it any way you want, there, there's no other way to describe that there. But we're backed into corners, Rick said, and we can, we can not put it in again, we can, at different levels, that hasn't been determined, no decisions have been made. But the fight is not here with the council or the commissioners, the fight's with the state legislation, because they're the only ones that can change this, and it's not going to change overnight. If they decide, we'll do away with the wheel tax, it's going to take several years down the road, if it ever does. But again, I just want to reiterate, the county has been very responsible and prudent. The highway department has, over the, the last thirty years, with every dollar that we've taken a quarter and turned it into a dollar, basically, for every kind of savings that we could get. So, at this point, we will entertain people that wish to speak, either in favor or against. Again, we would like you to just state your name and, and your address, and, and please get right into your presentation, because we are going to keep time, and we have two minutes here. So, okay, at this time. Karen?
My name is Karen Griggs. My address is six-three-five County Road Thirty-Five, Ashley. My purpose here is to support the wheel excise tax. After studying the matter, my view is that we need the revenue as soon as possible. There are two reasons for this. First, unless we improve our roads, we will not qualify for certain state funds. Secondly, any delay in raising revenue will cause the price of things to increase. For example, a dump truck, unless we order it today, might cost a hundred-and-fifty percent of its cost. If we just wait a year, it'll cost a lot more, according to the highway department head. The council is facing many, many unmet needs for personnel and equipment. Some of the gaps are in public health, innovative alternatives to court trials, and we need well-educated professionals. So, I believe we must improve our public finances by increasing the revenue from a wheel excise tax. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Keith Hefner. I live at five-six-one-eight County Road Seventeen in Garrett. I understand your plight. This is simple trickle-down government economics. The state, the governor and the legislature ran on the promise to lower property tax, knowing damn sure that when they did that, they would put the emphasis on you guys raising local tax. So, I understand your plight, but I have a car problem. I have fourteen vehicles on my property. Two are parts cars that are going to be scrapped, six are collector cars, and the others are whatever. I'm retired, my wife's retired, we very rarely drive, unless I'm taking one of the old cars to a cruise or whatever. Keep in, keep in mind a few things. The people here that have collector cars pump tons of money into the local economy, whether it be spending money at NAPA, to an interior shop, to Tireville, or whatever. We're putting money into the economy, and that's what drives our hobby. No pun intended. But you need to look at, okay, is my four-thousand-pound vehicle that I drive once every two weeks, what should I pay compared to that guy that's driving gravel truck loaded with fifty-thousand pounds every day of the week, beating our highways up, right? My car does very little damage. Excise tax is supposed to be for support of the highway. If I'm very rarely using that, how much should I pay? It should be on the pay-to-play principle. If I'm using the highway, and I'm using it a lot, pay a lot. If I'm using it very little, I should pay very little. And one thing I was kind of startled at, we're two million dollars kind of below what we should be in budget for highway maintenance? Is that, is that correct?
That's, that's what the number's showing.
How the hell did we get there? This just didn't happen overnight, did it?
Again, this, oh-
I know, but somebody needs, besides just raising taxes, we need to look, we need to look at why we're in the situation we're in.
It's up.
Okay.
And, and people, people here need to understand, Senate enrolled Act One, which puts us in this position, also gives and pretty much encourages cities and towns to start their own income tax. Thank you. Be aware of that.
Anybody else?
Todd Custer, 5821, County Road 17, Garrett. You've been prudent with... Dave said you've been prudent with the money and always turned down the wheel tax. But if you Google gravel road percentage by Indiana counties, DeKalb County, number one, 40% of our roads are gravel. LaGrange County collected, this is in 2011, $300,000. Noble County, almost $600,000. That is 2011. Look how much money they've collected over the years since then. A lot of this report that I got off the internet was also, must have been done by the Indiana Soybean Alliance, the Corn Marketing Council, Indiana Corn Growers. So to me, the farmers looked into it, and I guess I'm saying they probably are supporting it. Proponents argue that the state will not help counties until they demonstrate a willingness to help themselves. Counsel, consultants say that when you go to legislation and say, "Local governments need help," the first thing they ask is, "Do you have a wheel tax?" If you don't have it, they're not going to help you. And kudos to Ben because he's done a fine job. And like I said, in 2016, the county road rating was 5.23. In 2024, it's risen to 6.36. So I'm for it only if there's a long-term plan. Like, pick a 20-year plan to eliminate every gravel road in DeKalb County. And that's possible if you spend 40% of the revenue that comes in on gravel roads because that's 40% of what the roads are. Kalsium chloride is not the answer. It's bad for your vehicles. And they say that once you convert a road by chip and seal in it, it's less to maintain that road than it is a gravel road. Is my time up?
Yes.
I had more.
Thank you, Todd. Anybody else?
Hi, Brent Warfield, 310, Conductor Cove, Garrett, Indiana. I got a question, though. Is there any money anywhere else that this could come from? And I can get back with you on that one. The second one is, remember when you're setting, if you choose to do this, when you set the prices, that there's a lot of elderly people out there, retired people, they're on fixed incomes? So when you're setting those rates, please keep that in mind, that we've already have an overtax burdened people as it is. So every penny that you raise that you talk about, I see people get excited, this will increase so much money to our coffers, but that money comes out of your citizens' pockets. So remember that one's set, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Brent.
Hi, my name is Kayleen LaFonte. I live at 5575, County Road 17, Garrett. I just had a couple of questions. How is this going to affect our school buses, like our fleet?
Well, we're not here to answer questions because we'll take that under advisement there, but we don't have an answer for you tonight.
Okay, yeah, no, I understand. As a school bus driver, I'm a special needs school bus driver, and we're so underfunded already. I make 13.75 an hour, driving for eight hours a day. So, yeah. And also, I own a dumpster business, and six registrations that at, you know, $50 a piece, that could break a small business. So just another thought. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
What was... I'm sorry, can you tell me your name again?
Kayleen LaFonte.
Kaylee?
Close enough.
Did you sign in, like?
Yes.
And I can read it?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Just checking, just checking.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, there's Jen.
School busters, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Garber. I'm at 310 South Franklin in Garrett. I know that this isn't something coming from you guys, it's coming down from the state, and unfortunately, it affects all of us. I would hope that you guys can do everything you can to find money without having the taxes first. Like, that should be the first priority instead of just kind of bending over to the state and saying, "Sure, we can do that," right? No, I would hope that you guys are putting our interests first. I would also hope that there's some kind of way for you guys to stand up to the state when they do put these kind of pressures on you to pass these kind of taxes. So the minimum wage is still like $7 or something like that. And we are... Cost of living is increasing all the time, and minimum wage isn't matching that.
$13, that's awful.
I'm so sorry that you make that. That is... How can anyone live off of that alone? So adding another tax onto us just seems really unfair. We're already, like, taxed on so much stuff that I would think that out of what we're already paying, there should be a way for you guys to find money somewhere outside of putting another tax on us. So I'm very against the tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Leonard?
My name's Leonard McCullough. I'm located at 3574 County Road 52. And I can see your problem, but the problem, the problem we've all got here is that the state, and I'll use it, they're blackmailing you. And you guys are really the ones that represent us and protect us against things like that. Somebody should go after the state and try to get them to divide that up fairly. The other problem we got that everybody in this room has is that unfortunately, DeKalb County is one of the highest taxed counties in the entire state. Fact is, the last time I looked out of 96 states, or 96 counties, there's only three that was taxed any higher than DeKalb County. So somewhere, we're on a collision course. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard.
Jessica Shaw, 3865, County Road 79, Butler. I applaud you guys for having the meeting. I know the decision has to come. You have been backed in the corner, and I recognize that. And I'm not necessarily against the wheel tax, but I have some things that I'd like for you guys to consider when you're making the decision. Hence all the arguments and people here. I love seeing the room full of people. First, I'm a teacher in education. We say that things should be fair, not equal. Equal means everybody gets the same. Fair means everybody gets what they need to be successful. So I want to ask that you guys consider a formula that is fair to everybody, not equal for everybody, a mathematical formula that's not driven by emotion, by alliances, by special interest groups. So you take a farmer who has a semi who drives 5,000 miles a year opposed to a commercial semi who drives $40,000 a year. What kind of formula can you generate that has some consideration for that? Same thing, people are arguing classic cars. We can all stand up here and formulate that argument and why we shouldn't be charged. So there has to be a formula utilized to make it fair to everyone involved. And I want to ask that you consider that. Like others have said, I'm echoing, where else can you cut taxes? Because you're seeing people are hurting. Your people who vote you into office are sitting here hurting. It's not fair for us to put these decisions and these solutions back on your lap. You go to state for us, you fight for us. I'm glad people are here doing that. But we need to take a look at where can we cut spending and lessen that burden to the taxpayer? Because enough is enough. I mean, we have to pay for the services we have, but we have to be very mindful of where people are. We talked about getting up to level. I want, I would like for you guys to look at Ben's capability, the manpower. Can he get us up to levels in five years? Do we need to make that a 15-year plan due to the manpower we currently have so we're not bringing on additional resources, additional employment, things like that? Is something I'd like you to consider. Unintended consequences? Is that my timer? Okay. Sorry, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Anybody else? That poor guy in the back has tried to get up there a third or fourth time. He's going to be mad.
Well, my name's Bill Haller, and I live at 3777 County Road 14, Waterloo, on one of those dirt roads that I would desperately like to be chip and sealed. So I'm not opposed to the tax. I know money's got to come from somewhere, and the state put it on us. And four, what, three miles of road a year? That's nuts. I mean, how many hundreds of years is it going to take to convert them? So if we do this, I would like to see a set amount of mileage, like 25 miles a year, converted, 50 miles, and I'd like to see the schedule, and the road's done. I mean, I've lived here for over 30 years, and I've got more traffic, more housing additions, and more people. Nothing that improves my life like a paved road or about a drag strip. Because I got, I got six nice cars, three trailers, and three beautiful, or two beautiful boats. And every time I go down that road, if it hasn't lightly rained, they're all trashed as soon as I go. So that's all I got to say, say thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Mark, you want to come on up?
Just a quick comment. Let's see, my name's Mark McCullough. I live on County Road 23, out there by the auction park. I'm hoping that you guys keep in mind, some of us have... I have a collection of motorcycles. I have 10 of them. When I plate those, I only drive them maybe 10 miles every two years just to keep them in order. That's a huge expense from what I'm seeing. So try to keep that in mind. It is what it is, but it's going to get expensive. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
My name's Jack Ponius. I live at 1933 North Main Street, Auburn, Indiana. I am against the wheel tax. I'd like to say I find it kind of unfair that we would, you know, say we pay in, we have a...
Jack, would you pull the microphone up a little bit, please?
The microphone up.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. If we have a $2 million deficit and we're paying in $300,000 in taxes between the people of our county, it doesn't seem fair to me that we're paying in so we can join in a group where we might get money from a competitive grant program. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
John Ponius, P-O-N-T-I-U-S, 1933 North Main. Anybody knows me knows I have way more stuff than I deserve to have. But I have four people in my family, me, my wife, two adult children. That's four vehicles on the road at any one time out of all the stuff I own. That's... So just consider that when you're looking at this, please.
Lynn Reinhardt, 4224, County Road 71. Before you tax me more, I would like for you all to show me more fiscal responsibility. You were all elected for your conservative values. Things that I look at was nearly $10 million spent on a new highway maintenance facility. Then after that, we say we don't have enough money to maintain our roads. I know they, this spring, awarded bids to put a new roof on the covered bridge. They had four bids. They accepted the high bid at 190,000 versus a low bid of 112,000. Yes, I understand there were some reasonings, but there would have been things that could have been explored before they spent 70% more on that one project. Yes, it was only 78,000, but it was still 70% more. I have a hard time justifying myself spending 70% more for anything than what I could buy at someplace else. You talked about gas tax rate or gas taxes. Gas taxes have consistently increased. They increased again just July 1st. So it isn't a stagnant amount. If we look at roads as far as chip and seal, I know they've been doing a bunch of it this summer. I just happened to stumble on one that they done on County Road 50, less than one and a half miles. It goes from a gravel road at the state line, County Road 81, to County Road 75, another gravel road. Was that a priority road that needed to be addressed? I find that hard to believe. You mentioned some roads that were classified as a zero or a two. Were those addressed at the front of the list this year before other things? I don't know. That's just a question for you for the highway department. Your current budget, you said you were spending $3.5 to $4 million on chip and seal. I thought earlier in the presentation, you said that $5 million for chip and seal would bring all the roads that's below a five, up to a five over a 10-year period. So I was, that would only indicate, you know, a million or a million and a half shortfall to do that in five years, which five years, as somebody else said, would be a very fast timeframe to try to accomplish all that in. I think he's trying to cut me off. If I could say just a couple more things, if you look at alternative sources...
Okay, we're out of time. Sorry, Lynn, thank you. Anybody else? Pardon? Can I go a second time? First time through first. How'd your turn?
My name's Mark Myers. I live out on County Road 18 in Waterloo. And I just retired five years ago, and I'm so conservative, it's nasty. I have several cars and trucks. I've never sold one. It's always went to the junk when I got done with it. At any rate, it makes more physical, more financial sense for me to have these multiple older cars than it does to go out and buy a new $50,000 pickup truck. The issue is, I played all of them. I played nine of them, trailers, cars, trucks, everything I got. And I only drive 7,500 mile a year. So when you're talking about a wheel tax, I'm trying to understand exactly, are you talking about a tax that's going to maintain the roads and charge the people who are tearing up the roads more and the people or me who aren't hardly on the road at all? That's the only issue I have. There's nobody in this room that doesn't think that we're not going to have a wheel tax. It's coming. I'm just asking you to be fair about it. Because a lot of these people, I have a lot of cars and several of these other people in here do too, and we just drive them maybe 100, 200, 300 mile a year, a couple of them. So I'm just asking you to look at that issue and be fair about it. I know you've got a tough job. Just do your best. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else?
I'm Mark Coburn, 1591 State Road 427, Waterloo. I'm against it. I've got family members, old, young. They're not financially fit to pay more. We hired you guys to keep our stuff low, to not have to pay in taxes. I mean, why raise it? I know you need the money. We could pull it from someplace else. What you've got to do is squeeze it. You know, you guys know where everything's at. Find a place, find money where it's from a different place. But to charge everybody for that? No. I don't see it to be a good thing, you know, to charge us. Find another place, find another place where you can find the money. You know, that's all I ask. This gentleman's saying it's coming. You guys got the ability to say, "No, it's not." Instead of turning them yellow, why don't you turn them white? That's what you guys need to do.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else?
Frank Walker, 1707 County Road 43. I believe that, like the road in front of SDI is county, correct? 40 is county. We've got trucks coming from Michigan that buy permits that can go 150, 160,000 pounds on our county road. on our county roads. The state's letting them do that, and we're paying for it. They go through Auburn, so Auburn's paying for their bridges to run them big trucks through there. That's not helping our county roads. They go up and down 40. They go up, I live on a gravel road, and I've seen them go up and down there before, because they're lost, and it's way too much for that kind of weight.
Thank you, Frank. Anybody else?
Tina Craft, 5501, County Road 75A in St. Joe. I would like to see you vote down the tax again. I live in the country, and I enjoy the county roads being gravel. I don't see the reason to spend the money there. I think it would be nice if you would take the money out of the general fund and, you know, alter other things that you use money out of the general fund for, instead of adding another tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Lisa Reinhardt, 4224, County Road 71. We've heard from lots of people that are struggling with the fact that they have multiple vehicles. My family would be in that same boat, okay? So, given that, I suppose if the wheel tax is the only way that we can get these matching state funds, I'm not one to leave money on the table. I get that, okay? However, I would expect it to be the minimum, and I would expect you to explore an opportunity to minimize burdens on households. Now, I've heard the rules sound like it has to be this much on a car, and this much on a trailer, and this much on a semi, but whatever it takes to reach the minimum in order to be matched, I can't imagine our county doing anything more than that. And if there's a way that you can minimize burdens on households with multiple vehicles, that needs to be explored. So, another option, I think my husband got cut off with this, as you award tax abatements to companies that are coming to our county, and I get the need for that too, as you do that, consider that money that's put in an economic development fund to be used for our county roads, speaking to SDI, okay? Those trucks aren't going to pay this excise tax. We are. And yet, they're benefiting SDI. So, that needs to be considered in the future as well. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Lisa. Anybody else like to speak?
Dave, there are seats available. If there are people standing in the hallway that would like to sit down, there are seats available inside the door.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Mark Schuler, 185 Brook Hill Drive, Hannah, Ohio. I'm here to pitch my side hustle for the community that won't tax the roads after a period of time, and will restore roads to where they were before we started, or better. I'm here on behalf of the Sculpton Project. Just wanted to remind you, there's a big tax amount that we would be paying to the community, and happy to do it as additional resource, additional funds. So, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else? Anybody else like to speak? Third and last call. Anybody else like to speak? We're going to close the meeting here. We'll thank everybody for coming out tonight. We've heard lots of input. This is exactly what the council needs. There have been no decisions made, and it's, this is good. I'm glad everybody has spoken tonight. That's what it's all about. And I can guarantee you that everything that has been presented, whether it's pro or con, will be taken into consideration, absolutely. So, hearing no, from nobody else, we're going to close and adjourn the meeting. So, thank you for coming tonight.
We need a motion to...
Oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
We have a second.